Good morning, Team ND. Thanks for joining us today. We're excited to have you all here. If you think back to the end of 2020, you were asked to complete just a really brief Gallup Engagement Survey. It was just 12 questions and we had a phenomenal response from all of our team members across a large number of our agencies. And so we really appreciate you taking the time and providing that feedback and that information so that we can begin to strengthen the team member engagement that we see across the board here at the State of North Dakota. And so that's exactly what we want to talk about today. All of the results are in. Our action plans are in place and are being developed both at the state level and at the agency level. And so we have our Chief People Officer Stacy Brewer here with us today to lead us through that conversation. But before I turn it over to Stacy, I just want to encourage you. I know that we're on a Teams Live event. And in this setting, we want your engagement. We're going to ask for your engagement continuously throughout the day. You'll see a Q&amp;A function in this Teams Live event that works just like your chat. So if you want to get a question to Stacy or to Lisa Kadelka, who you'll see on a little bit later, feel free to use that Q&amp;A function and we'll save time at the end so that we can stop and address as many questions as possible. And Jen and I are also co-producing this event, so if you have any issues with audio, please also let us know through that Q&amp;A function. We'll be monitoring it. With that, thanks again for being here with us today. We hope you enjoy the content that we cover and we look forward to learning from each of you as well. Stacy Brewer, I will turn it over to you.
All right. Thanks, Molly. It's great to be here this morning with everybody. I'm in Week 7 as the Chief People Officer. I've had a great couple of months here getting to know everybody and I'm excited to talk to you today about engagement. I'm told that we have several hundred people on this call today, so it's exciting that we can use technology to connect like this and discuss engagement across our great team. So as you know, as Molly said, we deployed the Q12 Engagement Survey last December. We've got a lot of things to talk about in terms of what does engagement mean here at the state? Why are we focusing on it? Why did we select Gallup as our partner? I want to talk a little bit today about how engagement is everybody's responsibility. We all have a role to play in driving successful teams here at the state. We have a lot to share today. So this is a conversation about engagement. So I'm asking all of you to stay engaged with me, turn your distractions off and focus in on the content. I do have some interactive pieces in this presentation today. So if you have a browser window handy, if you are on a computer, or if you have your smartphone handy, keep that close because we will have an opportunity for you to engage in some of the content. We won't put any of you on camera, I promise, but we do want to hear your thoughts as we move through this content today. All right, so let's get started. So we're going to go back to the beginning and talk about why engagement matters, okay? So according to Gallup, engaged team members are those who are involved in, enthusiastic about, and committed to their work and workplace. When you care about your work, when you care about your teammates, the mission of your team, your agency, and the state as a whole, you're more engaged. And who doesn't want to feel that way? I don't think anybody gets up every day and says, "I want to have a bad day today. I want to go work with people that I don't like and I don't trust," right? We all want to be part of something special and that's really what engagement is all about. It's not an incredibly difficult concept, but it is something that teams need to work on and need to consciously think about. It's about how we all show up every single day and work together. So my first question for you, we're going to start out right away. So grab your smartphone, grab a browser. Molly's going to show you how to do this, but in one word, I want to hear from each one of you, what does engagement mean to you in one word?
And Stacy, I just shared that screen. And for everyone, if you look in the Q&amp;A section of this live team meeting, you'll see a link that says, "Go Here to Engage." Please click that link and you can enter your word on why should we focus on engagement? So I'll give you a few minutes to get there.
Look at that. That's great. I knew we were going to have a whole bunch of responses and a variety of responses because this really truly does mean different things to different people. But look at all of the answers here: teamwork, focused, involved, participation, enthusiasm, connecting. Those are all great examples of why we should focus on engagement and the things that we can drive as we think about how, again, we show up every day when we come to work. So that's great. Thank you so much for taking a minute to participate in that. All right, I think we can jump back to our presentation.
And Stacy, you'll just have to reshare that presentation, just so you know.
Okay, great. Here we go. We are jumping back. Okay. Okay, so next slide. Again, why focus on engagement? So we just got your thoughts on that, but it's really simple. We all do better work when we're engaged, right? We have less of the bad stuff and more of the good stuff. So less stress, less conflict, less frustration, higher levels of happiness, connection, safety, and trust. So this stuff, again, sounds really simple and easy to do, but isn't so easy to do, right? Unless we all show up and we make a conscious decision to engage with our team members, to engage with our leaders, and really give our best self every day. So my second question, okay, and I promise not every slide has a question, you guys. But my second question is, what does engagement mean to you in one word? I think that's our second question, right, Molly? Got it? Okay. All right, so grab your smartphones, grab your browser window again, and in one word, what does engagement mean to you?
And you'll use that same link that I shared in the Q&amp;A section to allow you to respond to the second question. What does engagement mean to you?
Yeah, those are great. Look at those answers rolling in. Happiness, unity, fun, purpose, involvement, investment. Those are great answers. And if we can grab these at the end, Molly, so we can create word clouds out of these, I think I want to keep these. These are great. Okay, all right, I'm going to jump back to the presentation. Thank you so much for participating. I love hearing from you as we go through this conversation today. And here we go. I'm coming back. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about why Gallup Q12. So Gallup is the industry leader in terms of engagement. They've been studying engagement for decades. They have, in their database, over 37 million respondents. Their dataset is huge. They survey employees, team members globally in over 200 countries across all industries. So nonprofit, for-profit, public sector, they've got the biggest database in terms of engagement. And so they really understand some of those levers that teams can pull to drive high-performing teams. So these are the 12 questions that you were surveyed on back in December, and they've got it set up in a pyramid. So if we start at the base of the pyramid and work our way up, we need to meet those basic needs first. And Q1 is, "I know what is expected of me at work." That's fundamental. So in order for you to feel successful, be successful, and feel confident in your role, you need to understand what's expected of you. That's one of the very first needs. The second need is, you need to have the materials and equipment to do your job. So you need to have a computer that works, the right software, the PPE that you need in your particular position in order to be successful and, again, feel empowered to do your best work. And as we move up the pyramid, we get into individual teamwork and growth areas as well. And so what we are focusing on, again, is starting at the base of that pyramid and working our way up. And so you'll hear that as we go through this presentation today in terms of action planning and the recommendations that we have from an action planning perspective. So these are, and the other thing I like about Q12 is, these elements, they're not high-cost things. They're things that we can do in the team meetings that we're already having, in the daily interactions that we're having with our colleagues. This is fairly simple stuff to implement. If we just take a moment every week or take five minutes at the beginning of our team meetings to talk about some of these things, and we'll share some examples of what that means and how we can do that as we move forward. Okay, so before we get into some of the action planning and the results for Team ND, I do want to talk a little bit about the definitions of the three levels of engagement. As I'm going through this, think about where you fall. I will show you our scores compared to the US averages. But as I'm going through these definitions, just think about, how do you come to work every day? The first definition is engaged. So these are the employees that are enthusiastic. They drive high performance. They're innovative. They're creative. They're emotionally attached to their work. They move the organization forward. They might be the early adopters in a significant change. The disengaged employees, the ones in the middle, they show up every day. They do their work. They may not be super attached to their work or their team members, maybe don't bring as much energy or as much passion, but they come to work and they do the job. And then the other group, actively disengaged, these are the team members that may actually undermine others. They may be somewhat disruptive, somewhat resentful. They may not have as high of productivity or quality of work. So this group, we hope we can move up because this group can slow a team down and can even damage some of the team culture a little bit too. So let me show you in terms of averages across the US. So Gallup is constantly monitoring these numbers. So if you go out to the Gallup portal, you're going to see these numbers fluctuate. But in the US, engaged workers tend to hover around that 36%, 37%. So in any given moment in time, about 36% to 37% of US workers are engaged. In the middle, it's about 51%. So hovers around that 50% mark. And then the actively disengaged hovers around that 13% mark. And these numbers did fluctuate, by the way, in 2020 due to COVID. It was a little bit of a roller coaster ride in terms of engagement in 2020, but Gallup is reporting that engagement levels have now stabilized. And we are back to these numbers. So in terms of Team ND, we hit 32% for engaged, 52% for disengaged, and 16% for actively disengaged. So we've got a little bit of opportunity here. We're not too far off from the US averages, but we have a little bit of opportunity to move our numbers up. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about our program goals and our 2021 timeline. So now, again, we've taken the survey, which is great. We've got our data. But I want to rewind the clock just a little bit and talk about why are we doing this and what are some of our goals? So the first thing is, we want Team ND to be seen as an employer of choice in the State of North Dakota. When people think about, "Where can I work in North Dakota?", we want them to think the State of North Dakota. We want to drive high talent here. We also want our team members to be engaged at a level that meets or exceeds Gallup's national level for US engaged workers. So could we get to 40% engaged? Could we get to 50% engaged? Could we at least get to the US average? I think that is absolutely doable and something that we should move towards. And then the third one here, can we tell our story? Can we tell our story externally? Talk about our culture? Share what it's like to work here? Share the purpose of our agencies and of Team ND as a whole? And many of you do it. I have seen some of your posts on social media. They're fantastic. You're talking about all the different things that you're working on. So one of the things here is, I just wanted to share a little bit about why I came to Team ND. So as I was thinking about this position and putting my name in for this position, I actually sat down one day and wrote down some of my citizen experiences. So I'm going to share a little bit of that with you. In 2011, the National Guard showed up in my backyard and put up HESCO bags to save my house and to save my entire street during the 2011 flood. In 2018 and 2019, I was on I-94 every single week driving to Fargo for meetings. Every single week, I was out there by myself, didn't matter what the weather was. And the ND Roads app, that's on my home screen of my phone. If the roads weren't green, I didn't go. That app kept me safe. It made me late for some meetings, but it kept me safe. In 2020, I managed crisis communication in my last organization. Every single day, the updates on Facebook at 11:00 AM gave me the data that I needed to figure out what we were going to communicate to our employees, what decisions we needed to make, what the situation was with COVID. Your work has impact. That's just a couple stories from my life, but there's real purpose and there's real impact in the work that we're doing here. I don't have to tell you that. I just wanted to share, you already know it, but I just wanted to share my citizen experience and give you a sense of why I came here. You saved my home. You kept me safe. And you helped me do my job. This is a great team. We're doing great work. That's purpose. And we need to tell that story more so we can drive more people to our team. Okay, so let's jump back to, again, 2021 engagement timeline. What are we going to do with all this great data that we have from the survey? So we surveyed in December. In February, we opened up the Gallup portal to all team members. We are just now starting to work with agencies to build their action plans. So if you haven't heard from your leadership yet in terms of your survey results, and if you haven't started talking about action plans yet, don't panic. Every agency is at a little bit different stage in action planning, but we are starting to work with the agencies to put their plans together in terms of some of the specific areas that they want to focus on. What Gallup teaches us is to build action plans in iterations and then pulse survey every four to six weeks or so. That's a best practice. We might survey your agency every eight weeks. That timing will depend on your agency and what focus areas you have and what your action plan looks like. So I would just ask you, if you get emails from Gallup, it's likely a pulse survey. Don't ignore them. Jump into those emails and take those surveys because the more data we have, the more we can understand, are we making a difference? Are these action plans moving the needle? And are some of the things effective that we're working on? The other thing I would show you on this timeline is, we will repeat the full annual survey about the end of August or early September. We decided to move that up because then we will have data earlier in terms of the annual planning that agencies begin to do towards the end of Q3, early Q4. They will have that data and can build that data into their strategic plans for the upcoming year. So that is the kind of the timeline here for 2021. Again, if you haven't started action planning or heard your agency results, you will hear those very soon. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about how we did. So today, I'm just going to share the Team ND results. Again, we can slice and dice the data multiple ways in the Gallup portal. And so your agency will likely slice the data down to your agency level. You can even take it down to the team level. Today, we're going to look at Team ND overall. And this will give us, you know, a good baseline. This is year one for us, right? So now we've got a good baseline to work from, so I'm going to share this with you. So this slide has quite a bit of data on it, but a couple of things I just want you to follow along with me here. So in 2020, again, year one for us from a Q12 perspective, we had over 45 agencies participate and over 4,600 employees take the survey. So we had a 63.4% response rate, which was a great year one. So we have a lot of good things to build on here. In the top right of this slide, you'll see our grand mean score is 3.72, and that's just the average of all 12 questions. And then you'll see in the middle of the slide here are heat map. So what Gallup does is, they take our scores and compare them to that full database. So again, in their database, they have 37 million respondents. They're constantly adding data to their database. And so you might actually see heat maps change over time because as we are compared to the other organizations that participate in the survey, some of our red and yellow and green colors might fluctuate. But this gives you a sense of how we did. So the other thing that's great about the Gallup portal is it serves up to HR and to agency leaders' recommendations. So in terms of Team ND, again, our strengths were Q2 and Q5. So Q2 in terms of materials and equipment, Q5 in terms of somebody at work cares about me. So that's great. We can continue to build on those strengths. The low-ranking items for Team ND are Q1, "I know what's expected of me," and Q4, "recognition." So here's our opportunity areas, Q1 and Q4. So just remember that as we go through this because I'll come back to Q4 in just a little bit. Okay, so we have our results. What are we going to do? So that's what we're going to talk about next. So action planning is the next step after we get our survey results back. So in terms of action planning, what we've identified is, we would love to see all the agencies work on Q4. Again, because that was the low-scoring question across all of Team ND. So we're asking agencies to build Q4 into their action plans. Then what we're asking agencies to do is pick one more priority area for your agency division or team, however you want to slice and dice your data and your full team, but add one more Q12 priority area to your action plan. And then build those action plans in those iterations and pulse survey every couple of months or so until we repeat the full survey again later this year. So then we'll get updates as we're working through these action plans, whether or not the things that we're doing actually are making a difference. Do you feel differently when you come to work? Is your experience a little different? We'll get that data as we pulse survey. So again, you'll get those emails from Gallup. We've also, I'm going to go back to the top here, we've also trained a team of HR engagement partners. So these individuals have gone through training with Gallup. They are experts in the portal. We have built out a process and a facilitation plan for action planning, and so they are armed and ready to help agencies put their action plans together. And I'll share those names with you later in the presentation. Okay, so I want to give you some examples here. So this is how easy this is. These are screenshots directly out of the portal. And when I'm done, Lisa Kadelka is going to jump into the portal and actually show you how to navigate to some of these screens. So Gallup's system is really robust. So what I did is, I went into Q4 and I went into kind of the manager area and took a screenshot of this because Gallup serves up things that you can do. So number one on here, call attention to good performance by recognizing employees during regular team meetings. Again, this doesn't have to be hard. This is stuff that we can do at the first five minutes of our team meetings. And it's really simple. And I have to tell you too, I was thinking about this a little bit last night, of course. And, you know, some of you may be listening going, "Yeah, that's not a big deal, Stacy. We do that already." If you're on one of those teams that's already doing this, that's fantastic. Keep doing it. What else can you do? If you're not, then there is some opportunity here, right? And again, it's really easy. It's not multimillion-dollar implementation of fancy programs, right? It's taking five minutes at the front end of a meeting just to say, "What's working this week? What success stories do we have? Let's go around the room and talk about that." Another one on here, I kind of like number four. We probably have to figure out how to do that electronically these days, but create a board of accomplishments where employees can post recognition notes. You know, simple things like that, again, that can make an impact on our teams. And then in terms of team members, the portal also serves up ideas for each of us as individuals. So I can go into the portal and find out, okay, as a team member, what can I do to impact engagement? Are there things that I can recognize my colleagues for? Or can I build it even into my weekly schedule in terms of, you know, recognition? Or whatever it might be, again, whatever question you're focusing on. But I love number three, identify your biggest cheerleaders at work who help you believe in your success. You know, what if you met with those individuals on occasion and talked about how you're doing and got some feedback from them? Or get in the habit of thanking or giving recognition and praise to at least one coworker each week. What if every Friday at 9:00 AM, you put a calendar invite on your Outlook calendar that said, "Hey, send a note of thank you" to one team member? You take 10 minutes to do it. You know, would that have an impact on your colleagues and on your team culture? I think it could. So the message here is, engagement isn't just a leadership responsibility. We all have a role to play in engagement. And so I want to share a little bit about those role definition and expectations. So in terms of agency directors, what we're looking for here is that they really champion engagement and set the tone in your agency. We want our agency leaders to model behaviors of an engaged team member. So remember that first category, those employees that show up every day. They're excited. They're ready to go. They're emotionally attached and committed to their work. We want our agency leaders to model that behavior and approach this with a growth mindset. So never stop learning, what more can we do, that sort of thing. In terms of managers of people, we want to create an environment conducive to engagement, included in daily conversations and team meetings, just what I was talking about. Provide that ongoing feedback and coaching, and again, model behaviors of an engaged team member. And then what can all of us do? We can participate in the surveys, the full annual survey, the pulse surveys. We can participate in engagement discussions in our team meetings. Come on camera and share your thoughts during those conversations. Recognize colleagues for their success. Use the portal for ideas. And bring engagement ideas to your manager during your one-on-one conversation. You know, what more can you do to impact your team culture? And then again, model the behaviors of an engaged team member. Show up every day, ready to go, and excited about the work that you're doing. So notice in the green down here, engagement is everyone's responsibility, and I truly believe that. Okay, so next steps. Is everybody ready to jump into the portal? You can follow along with Lisa if you want to, open up a browser window. If you just want to watch, you can do that too. Molly has created a video to help you get started in the portal, so you don't have to click along with Lisa today. You sure can if you'd like. But you can watch the video afterwards too. But the portal is my.gallop.com. It is single sign-on, which is great. So it's easy to get in there. Lisa's going to show you exactly how to do it. But again, here's a screenshot. This is Q1. Gallup serves up to you ideas on things that you can do, again, depending on which priority areas you might have in your agency. So it's just a fantastic tool. There's so many ideas in here. If you can think of it, Gallup probably has some recommendations or a tool for it. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Lisa and we're going to jump into the portal.
Hi, everyone. Great to have so many people join us this morning. And so I am going to go ahead and share my screen. I will be the first to admit that sometimes I'm really lucky at sharing screen and sometimes I'm not. So hopefully we'll be all good there. So it looks like, from my standpoint, that we have the Gallup.com home up and so everybody can see it. And one of the things, as soon as you go out to Gallup, is you're going to find that they're always giving you some great articles and other things that even if you don't have any kind of access to the rest of their stuff or that you can always go ahead and look at. But if you look up here over in the right-hand top, you'll see a sign-in and you just go ahead and click on that. And I'm going to, just if you see down here, we have the little single sign-on. And this will allow us to log into our organization's portal. So you click on that, and then once you're in there, it's pretty easy. You just have to click on "State of ND," all one word, and then you click "Continue." And then it's going to go ahead and take you into your single sign-on. Now, what you'll see in there is you'll have where you put your email address and then your regular password. Just because I was in here already today, it just brought me right in without asking me that information. And I always like it. It's very personal. It says, "Good morning, Lisa." And then right away, it goes into, you know, "What are some of your top actions?" And these are always based on the results of your survey. And so that's the information that's going to go ahead and come up. And like this one says, "While this element is high for your team, on average, only one in three workers strongly agree that they have told their manager that one of the one thing that they need most to get their work done and why." So it's so interesting how many times we may not be upfront or forthright about kind of the things that we need with our managers. And so one of the things we hope that we can really do through this engagement piece is help build people's skills on how to go ahead and have those conversations with their managers and really let people know what's out there. So then, as you see, I can continue to take a look at different articles and see different things that I wanted to... and, um, see different things that I wanted to. And then I can also go in here and just view all of the learning content. Um, that would be available to me. So you can see it's asked saying that, um, it's loading my data because it's going ahead and it's going to individualize that information, um, for me based on the results that, um, my team had for the survey. And I know I was looking at some of the questions earlier on and someone asked, you know, so we have this Team ND information, is that broken down by agencies? And it certainly is broken down by agencies that participated. And it'll also be broken down to divisions or even individual managers if they had four or more people that report to them that completed the survey. Um, that we need at least that minimum, um, so that we make sure all of the results continue to be anonymous and confidential. And so people don't have to worry about, um, you know, something being traced back to them that they might be uncomfortable about. So as we continue to go ahead and take a look at here, this, we'll see, um, some different trends that are at that. And then I can also go ahead and really take a look at even things by topic if I want to. So it really gives me a lot of different, um, options on that. I'm just going to go ahead and, um, click back here to kind of get back to the page that showed our Team ND results. And so this is our results for the state of North Dakota. Um, if I click on that. And so of course my results are going to be just a little bit different. I have a little bit bigger access than, um, what individuals would have. You, if you have results, it would come in and give you what those are. I think one of the great things about this Gallup piece is really conducting the survey was just really only one small aspect of it. And to really, the best part of what we get through this is all of those resources, um, that Gallup has. And, you know, I really like that part of that partnership. And that was something that we really see this as much as anything else is it might be a survey, but it's also really all about, um, our training and development as we move forward. So as Stacy talked about, these are our results for the Team ND. And if I want to go ahead and say, you know, I really want to do a better job of providing my staff with, um, them to have an understanding of what's known and what's expected of me, I would just go ahead and click on these insights. And each question has a similar training module for that. So it talks a little bit about what's expected of me. And then it goes ahead and gives me some recommendations. And so I can come in here and say, I just have five minutes and I want to go ahead and pull a piece of recognition, or some recognition up. I can go ahead and go, oh, that's a really good idea. And how is that going to impact, what's that business outcome on that? And, um, and it even will identify metrics to measure expectations on that. So, but if I wanted to go ahead and really kind of take a look at the entire learning module, I can just click on start the module. Um, you'll, then I see the entire question is I know what's expected of me at work. It's showing there that I'm a manager. If you're an individual, um, team contributor, it would go ahead and show that. And then, um, it's going to, so then I go ahead and you can see that I have the entire, on the left-hand side, I have the entire, um, agenda for the training on this one question. And each one of those questions is going to go ahead and, um, start with that focus on me. And then there's going to be a short video that's going to tell you a little bit more about that question and, um, why Gallup has felt that that question is important. None of these videos are longer than one minute. Um, they're typically 40 to 60 seconds. Sometimes I make the mistake of saying 40 to 60 minutes, but nope, just seconds, 40 to 60 seconds on that. And you can get a little bit of an overview of that question. One thing I want people to understand about the Q12 questions as you take a look at those is that Gallup has done a tremendous amount of research looking for questions that tell the difference between an organization that's doing okay and an organization that's doing really well. And so how we respond to those questions really distinguishes then in workplaces that are, people are feeling actively engaged or they're disengaged or they're actively disengaged around those questions. Cause they're really finding that these are the things that make a difference in our organizations. So I can go ahead and if I want, I would, could look at that video. And then it's just going to go ahead and send me on to the next, um, segment. So it would send me on to questions to ask yourself. Um, and I can see what those are. But once again, if I just want to go ahead and jump down, maybe I'm having a team meeting. So I want to jump down to three things to do with my team. I can quickly do that. As you can see, none of these are lengthy articles that will take you, you know, hours to read. They are all really pinpointed to give you some really clear ideas. Once again, all based on research that Gallup has done that when they find in organizations that do these things and team members that do these things, that's where we have those engaged organizations and places people really want to work. Um, they have some really great guides that you can see. Like here's this manager's resource guide to question one. And, um, it's just a two-page, front-to-back guide. And then they will always have additional recommendations. So if I really wanted to continue to dig into this, you can see I would have a lot of additional resources that are available to me. And one of the things that we have, who have been in kind of working with the Gallup piece over the last, um, couple of months is it feels like every time we come in here, we discover something new. They, they are continuously updating and improving all of their information based on the resources that they have. So that just kind of gives you a quick, um, introduction into all of those resources. Once again, that was a part of our contract was that all Team ND members would have access to all of the resources available through Gallup resources. So please take advantage of those. Um, I think you'll find some great things out there. So I'm going to toss it back to Molly and Stacy.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so I realized as I was going through the PowerPoint here that I skipped question number three. So I'd love to jump back to that. Uh, so grab your smartphones, grab your web browser. Question number three is, in one word, give us one word that describes your best coworker.
Just one minute, in the link, I'm sharing a new link that, or in the chat, I'm sharing a new link that you'll need to use to engage for this question. So please look in the Q and A section. And I just shared a new link, so please use that menti.com link that you see there, it's different than the first one. But use that and let us know what's one word that describes your best coworker.
This is the biggest word cloud of the day. Look at this. Okay, supportive was winning for a long time, but it looks like maybe helpful came out on top. These are great, reliable, friendly, compassionate, enthusiastic, intelligent, honest, motivated. These are great. These are definitely people I think that we all want to work with. Thank you again for jumping in and giving us your thoughts here. These are great, great, great words. Okay, so Molly, are we ready to jump into the Q and A and take a look at some of the questions that are coming in?
Hey, that sounds good. I, I see that we have a lot of questions coming in, so please keep them coming. Uh, the more the better. If you give us your name, we can follow up with you because I don't think we'll be able to get to everything in the time that we have today. But we will do our very best. As a reminder, if you want to submit a question, go ahead and put it in the Q and A function of this, uh, of this meeting. And it's set to be anonymous, but if you want us to follow up with you, change that anonymous to your first and last name or to your email so that we know how to find you for that follow-up. Otherwise, we won't be able to, to find you. So with that, let's take a look at some of the questions. I'm going to, uh, just one second, let me get to the question box, Stacy. Okay, Stacy, here's a question for you on engagement and in relation to the length of time you've been with the state of North Dakota. The question says, does engagement decrease the longer you are with the state? And are those stats available for public employees? And I'll turn it to Stacy or Lisa, whoever feels comfortable answering that.
Yep, so maybe I'll jump in and Lisa, you can, you can help me finish the, the answer. So we can slice the data by, um, length of time of employment. And there are some differences between employees that have been, um, in, you know, employed by the state of North Dakota compared to those that have been here longer. It's very typical, uh, for team members in year one to be highly engaged. And some of that can trail off over time. And then there's different jumps at different points depending on how you slice and dice the data. We are not atypical from other organizations. Other organizations also see those trends. Um, and so we, but Gallup does allow for us, uh, to, um, to manipulate the data, you know, based on some of those characteristics. Lisa, would you add anything more?
Nope, I think you covered it well.
Okay.
So one question that I see coming in that I know we've heard a lot in our conversations and Gallup says it's actually probably one of the biggest questions that they get in their decades and, uh, thousands and thousands of people taking the survey. But this, the question says, what is the significance of the question? Do you have a best friend at work? Lisa, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, I would be happy to take that one. And we have had some good, great conversations with, um, Steve, our Gallup representative. And what he said was, is that as they did their research and, um, one of the things that Gallup really does that I tried to talk about earlier was, is that, is there's a lot of questions we can ask. But those questions don't necessarily distinguish between a highly engaged workforce and just an engaged workforce. So they really want to have questions that show that difference. So they also at first were kind of uncomfortable about the question, do I have a best friend at work? And so they thought, well, we're just going to go ahead and use, I have a good friend at work. And what they found is the vast majority of people said, I have a good friend at work. And it was not really telling the difference between a actively engaged workplace and actively engaged employee and, um, an employee that was engaged. One of the things that they talked about, the importance of having that best friend at work is, that's really saying that I have somebody that I can really trust. I have somebody that I can really go to, um, maybe when the chips are down or I really need some help with some things. So, you know, like Jen Rabbin, Rabbin and I have been working together for a couple of years. And I know I can go ahead and send a document to Jen and, and say, "Hey Jen, can you take a look at this and really help me review it and see how it's going?" And I know she's looking out for my best interests. And so she's going to give me great information and great advice. So I really trust her doing that. So that's kind of how we're thinking about that best friend at work. It might not be the person that you're camping with every weekend or going to a movie with, but it's that person that you can really, um, trust, um, to help you out at work.
Thank you, Lisa. The next question is tied to our performance management system. And it says, will new, will new performance evaluation be developed to help us work toward these team goals and what we're seeing in the Gallup engagement results? And that was a great timing of that question. Lisa, do you want to talk a little bit about how we're going to connect what we're doing with Gallup to performance management?
Yeah, you know, we have been working on really kind of taking a look at our performance evaluation and really moving from, um, I think what people still continue to really think of, oh, we do that once a year, once a year, I'm going to go ahead and fill out that form. I'll have this meeting with my employee, um, the, or my team member, um, the team member looking forward to that meeting with their manager. But we really want that it to be performance management. And I don't even know if management's always the best word. But we really want that, we want people to be having conversations throughout the entire year about how things are going. That each, both the manager and the team member are really developing their skills to have those conversations that feel proactive, that they feel really positive on things that are going on. And so we started that actually back in September, um, kind of late August, gathering a lot of information about what people like, what they don't like, what they would like to see. And so we worked on that reboot. And then as we started to work on, oh, we need to have some resources to really improve our skills around good, having good conversations on both ends. Um, so that when the employee feels comfortable going to the manager and saying, "Hey, I don't have everything that I need to do my job." That we've skilled up the manager to know how to go ahead and respond to that. You know, like not get defensive or not get, you know, type of thing. And so we're like, okay, we're going to have to build all those training materials. And then we got Gallup and we started looking at all of the resources that we had for Gallup. And we went, wow, the philosophy of Gallup and engagement is the same philosophy that we want to have with our performance management and how we want our people to work together. So that's where that link is going to come in. And so as we're rolling that out come this spring and summer, you're going to see us referring to these Gallup resources all the time. Because when we talk about here, how do you have that conversation? We can pull up some amazing resources that we know are research-based out of Gallup to help people continue and grow. Molly and I and Stacy and others have been having conversations about training programs that we can put together utilizing these results. So, um, so we're pretty excited about that.
Thanks, Lisa. And I see we are getting flooded with questions, so keep them coming. Remember, we're not going to have time to get to all of these. So please, if you want a response, include your name and we can reach out to you and have a follow-up conversation on that. Stacy, the next question I have is coming your way. Can you, and I'm combining a few questions that are similar here. But there are some questions about the, the Q12 survey and the questions that are included in there. And were they tailored for the state of North Dakota? If so, how was that done? Uh, and if, if not, have these questions been used across other state governments or public entities in the past?
Yeah, that's a great question. Happy to address that one. So the Q12 survey tool is a tool that Gallup owns. They designed it, um, they deploy it. It is not customizable depending on, um, you know, organization type, team size, uh, you know, that sort of thing. It is one tool that they deploy to all organizations so that there's consistency in their database in terms of results. So it is not something that we can customize, um, and add things to, take things out, reword the questions, um, that sort of thing. And it's all in their database and all anonymous. And so again, they actually deploy the survey to you. Um, you get those emails directly from Gallup. All the answers go into their database. Uh, and, and it's, it's, uh, one design across the globe for all types of organizations. But good question, um, I think that's good understanding for everybody to have.
Could I just follow up a little bit on that one?
Yep.
So one of the things I know that part of that question was too, is, is that, um, you know, our other governmental organizations, um, also, um, a part of Gallup. And we, they're the, when you take a look at the number, the organizations that, um, use the Gallup Q12 survey, um, through Gallup, it is across the board from small organizations, um, you know, kind of just individual, um, maybe 10, 20 people within their organization to huge international companies. There certainly are many public sector organizations that use the Gallup Q12. And so we can look at our results based on, here's how we compare to all the results across the, the United States. We could look at it across the world. We can also look at it, um, down to, um, organizations that are more like us. And so the Department of Transportation could go ahead and say, hey, I want to look at results from similar Department of Transportation organizations. And they can drill down as, at the agency level to go ahead and take a look at that. So there's a lot of those kind of pieces that I will admit, we're still digging into and, um, and working with.
Thank you both for responding to that. I, I'm moving quick, so I'm not giving you much of a chance to breathe in between questions. You're doing great. We're also seeing questions around, Lisa, when you showed those survey results or Stacy in your slide deck, it talked about the, you know, in one area, we might see a rating of a 4.2, but it would be in red. And in another place, we might see a rating of 3.8, but it's in yellow. Can you explain how, how that works? And I know that there are two different parts of the Gallup rating system, but maybe revisiting that would be beneficial.
Yeah, I think that's a really good question. I think that's something that, um, team members and leaders, you know, struggle with just a little bit, right? Because if you look at the number, if it's a 4.2, Because if you look at the number, if it's a 4.2, it certainly doesn't feel like it should be red. Um, so the important thing to understand is as Gallup is getting all of these survey results from all these different organizations as they're deploying this survey constantly, um, they are comparing our results to their entire database. So a 4.2 on any particular question might not actually be a really high score compared to the other 30-plus million responses in their database. Uh, and so it's a comparison, that heat map is a comparison to all the other organizations, um, in terms of their results. So in one particular question, a 4.3 might be really high and might be green. And on the next question of 4.3 might be red, uh, because again, compared to all the results in their database, um, you know, that's higher or low. So that's how it works. So the heat maps can actually fluctuate. So if you pull your heat map for your agency, you know, in March and you go pull it again in August, you might actually see some color changes, uh, because the data is being updated in Gallup's system constantly.
Thank, thank you for providing clarification on that, Stacy. Very helpful. Uh, one other thing that, that might be beneficial to take a look at as I look through these, these comments here. Oh, sorry, I just lost it when it auto fed up. We're seeing a lot of questions around rewards and recognition. And I know that that's addressed in one of the 12 questions, uh, within the, the Gallup survey. And, you know, some, we do have some limitations on what rewards and recognition might look like. But any thoughts on how teams can start to improve on recognition?
Yeah, I think that's a great question too. So Lisa, I'll jump in here, but please add more if I miss anything or you're thinking about something else. Um, you know, in terms of recognition, again, this, uh, this stuff doesn't have to be hard. Um, it can be a simple, you know, phone call to a, a colleague. It could be even a handwritten note. It could be, um, just saying thank you in a team meeting. Um, and again, some of that sounds so basic and maybe kind of common sense. But, uh, if your teams aren't operating that way, or if, if, um, if you need to build that habit, uh, you know, I live and breathe by my Outlook calendar. You know, again, if I want to get, if I want to make sure I do something, I put a time block on my calendar. And so, you know, doing a 9:00 AM on a Friday, I don't know why I keep going to Friday, but that's a great way to end the, the week, right? To say thank you to a couple colleagues. It can take 10 minutes to send a couple emails or make a couple phone calls to say thank you. So recognition doesn't have to be, again, a lot of time, really expensive. Um, it can be a simple thank you, you know, a couple times a week. So, um, that's my thought on that. Lisa, would you have anything to add?
Yeah, you know, I think one of the things too is oftentimes when we, we think of recognition and rewards that people are really thinking about, you know, those salary dollars and how, you know, what that pay raise might really be. But what really Gallup is saying and what we really find from the research, it's all about that. Um, people's telling you and saying, you know, um, boy, that, thanks for getting this done today. Or really giving feedback on how a person completed their work or that they completed that work. So we really understand, oh, you know, so I could really understand when I worked for Joe Morris at that, oh, that's really how Joe wants me to focus my time. That really made a difference to, um, the folks in OMB or to Team ND. And so that's where, when we think about that recognition, it's really saying, you know, in the last seven days, I received recognition on how I'm doing my job and that I'm doing it in a manner that's, um, really good. It's not saying that I got a pay raise. Um, and really what Gallup has really found is, is that their research is, is that, you know, when we think about some of those monetary pieces, that that has less of an impact on our engagement than that ability that we have in giving recognition to, um, our coworkers, to people that work in other agencies, um, to the people that work for us, um, on that. So that's kind of really what they see is really the, the, the big focus on, uh, on recognition on that. So, and those are what we have control over, right? We always have to think about what do I have control over? What is it that I can do and, you know, kind of, um, you know, maybe thinking back to my mom when I was growing up and my mom saying, you know, you don't have control over those things. So why are you, don't say that people did this to you. What is it that you're doing to go ahead and, and take, you know, that positive control over your life instead of focusing on something that you don't have control over? So, you know, way to go Shirley to help me out with some good advice when I was young. So I know there was another question on there that Molly wanted some clarification on. Um, and I think it had to do with some of the Gallup database. Can you just ask that question again, Molly? And we can see if we can respond to that in our last couple of minutes.
Absolutely. There were a couple of questions, uh, just asking if their employee information is stored in Gallup. And so I wanted to be really clear on that. So Lisa, if you could just let us know.
So I mean, I'm just, are people concerned that they might have some personal information and things that might be, um, stored with Gallup? You know, that's not going to be the, the, the case on that. Really, all they do is, is that they, they just get the, the end results and it's all, you know, algorithms and, and things like that. So there isn't like, there's a, a lot of personal data. We did spend a lot of time, um, with NDIT to make sure that, um, everything was secure with anything that would be going from Team ND over to Gallup and, and back and forth on that. And as we've talked about, you know, Gallup, um, their security is, you know, also very important to them. Um, and so I think everybody felt, um, really good that we weren't going to have any, anything that was, you know, shouldn't have been shared back and forth. So I hope that helps people feel more comfortable.
Thanks Lisa. Stacy, we have time for one last question. Excuse me, and I want to come back to you because I think you addressed this in your PowerPoint, but we just might need to revisit it. There was a lot of information packed into that. There's some questions here about when will the next, uh, Q12 survey take place? So that we can measure our progress and how we're moving along in our engagement? As well as, um, are you seeing differing results in those survey responses with our hybrid work environment of some people being in the office and some people being out?
Yeah, those are great questions. Okay, so the first one in terms of dates. So we will, again, we're starting the action planning process with agencies. And the way this works is once we put our action plans in place, we do those, those pulse surveys. So for example, if your agency picks Q4 and Q2 to work on, you should see a pulse survey coming in the next, you know, month or two about those two questions, just those two questions. So those pulse surveys are super short, you know, five minutes or less type thing. And that'll help us gauge how we're doing throughout the action planning process. So you'll probably see pulse surveys two or three times, um, over the next, you know, six months or so. And then at the end of August, early September, we got to pick a date in there, um, we will repeat the full Q12 survey. So you will see the full survey again, hit your inbox. We'll make sure we communicate that. So you're watching for it. Uh, but that's when we'll repeat the full survey. So that's kind of the timeframe over the next few months here. We'll do pulse surveys, super fast, five minutes or less, and then the full survey again, end of August, early September.
And I would actually say those pulse surveys will probably take people less than a minute because we found even the Q12 survey was taking people about three minutes to do. So those pulse surveys will be even quicker than that. I think the other, um, part that I know I saw a question in there was about if we would have open-ended, um, comment questions. And, you know, we really take our advice and, um, from Gallup on what they feel that really that those, um, our surveys should look like. And their advice is, is to kind of really stay away from those open-ended questions because they really are not providing information back to an organization that you can act on, um, on there. So it's really, this information is all, as we've talked about many times, very research-based with not only, here's the information for you, but really what we wanted to have, we want to make sure we had with the survey is what do we do with the information? And how do we use that to make everyone's life, um, a, a better place when they come to, to Team ND? And that's really what we want to do with that survey. And so we'll continue taking that advice from Gallup, um, to do that.
Stacy and Lisa, thank you for all of your time today. Thanks for handling all of those rapid fire questions. I really appreciate that. Stacy, the content that you shared with the group today was very valuable and definitely gives us a better picture of what's going on across the state and what we can expect moving forward. And Lisa, you showing us how to get into the Gallup portal can show us how we can take an active effort in shifting the engagement that we bring to work every single day. So if you've been looking in the Gallup portal and you're wondering, huh, mine looked a little bit different than Lisa's, that's okay. It's meant to look a little bit different, uh, based on different responsibility levels, whether you're a manager or not might affect it, or if you lead an agency, uh, that might affect it. But the common denominator is you all have access to a huge library of resources in Gallup that are tailored to help you plug in and make a difference from the role that you fill within the state. So please do log in. There was a video provided in those comments if you need some extra help. And if you need anything, feel free to email us at hrms@nd.gov. And I'll share that again in the chat, but reach out to us or your agency HR representative should also be able to assist and point you in the right directions. Thank you everyone for being here with us today. We hope you have a great rest of the week. Take care.